Okay, welcome everybody. This is the St. Albeth Commission for the month of April. I'm Catherine Hebert, Chairman. First order of business is pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you receive any emails or calls?
No.
Is there anybody that would like to speak?
I would like to speak. It's predictable, but it's short. I just want to make, there's a lot of talk on the federal level now of this DEI, a federal level official, and there's a lot of controversy about this, a lot of pushback. And I'm thinking of the bronze certification and our talk here about optimized equity required, participating equity training, develop and adapt the statement of equity. And I know there's, you know, the equity coach, which I don't support, but I just want to go on record as saying if an equity coach is to be the future of Bethel's governance, let it be in elected position, let it be supported by a majority of citizens. That's all. I just want to go on record as saying it should be supported by a majority of citizens. It's a town meeting or charter, whatever, but. I'm against an unelected equity coach.
Thank you, Billy. Nobody else? All right. So the next order of business are chairman's remarks. So I have a few things just to bring to your attention. Some of it's kind of interesting to me. So one of the things, a colleague of mine wrote an article for an international organization. It was called the Seventh Generation Principle, and it kind of resonated with me. It was interesting. It's, that principle dates back to the indigenous tribes that had this tradition of how their decisions impact the world seven generations out from now. And again, and she wrote in the context of where she worked, the industry she works in, and how those decisions impact our communities and our world now and in the future. The reason it resonated with me, what we're doing with the St. Albeth, whether it's, whether it's be decisions or promoting or elevating, amplifying, supporting, whatever we do impacts in a smaller way our world in a positive way. And it's just something. So going back to sustainability and we talked, we had talked about fast fashion and how the world we live in, we're buying things and maybe we wear it, we wear it once or twice. And whether we give it away to thrift stores or consignment shops or people, we loved ones, our family, our friends, hey Kelly. But there's a, there's a group in Westport that created this pop-up called the Fashion Exchange Project. Not, not the fashion exchange store in Newtown, but which is a consignment store. So it has its own little process and guidelines. It's set up as a pop-up and there is some, there are several of them around the country. And it's just another way to deal with fast fashion as it relates to sustainability. And I thought that was kind of interesting and it could be something that would be incorporated into like a repair cafe if that happens. I want to also bring up something that I'm involved with, which is SCORE. We, the Simple Steps to Starting Your Own Business. So I'm part of the SCORE Western Connecticut team. I head up the community development and engagement. I don't know if any of you know, SCORE is a national organization that's been around for 60 years. And their mission and goal is to help startups, people who have passions and dreams to have their own journey and to help them, advise them, mentor them to be successful in their entrepreneurial journey. So I partnered with the Bethel Library for this program, this educational program. Their flagship program called Simple Steps to Starting Your Own Business, which is a five series educational program over five weeks. And we had our first one last week, the first selectmen showed up and it was, it was great. It was extremely successful. A lot of people showed up. Sunny was there for her business. And why am I talking about this? Well, small businesses make up 99% of businesses in the United States. So someone told me that and I was like, no way, but I looked it up and that is exactly right. And they are essentially the backbone of our communities and part of sustainable Bethel is to promote and advocate and help this entrepreneurial spirit as part of Bethel's sustainability, quality of life and future. So, and helping small businesses ties right into the health of economic development. I participated in the monthly meeting of the HRA Regional Recycling Task Force. As you know, their goal is to divert as much waste in recycling and reuse as much possible through different programs, their educational programs, and ultimately to change behavior and how we get rid of waste. On the topic of regional repair cafe, they are actually talking to Abbott Tech. They have a regional repair cafe for all of the participating member towns under the Housatonic Resource Recovery Authority. There are 19 Bethels as a member town. They are in the beginning of stages of this, hopefully to work, you know, and to work out all the kinks and the details. And hopefully that will be reality. They will have something scheduled in the fall and Bethel will participate in that. The food scrap program is growing. It's going well. The town is working on developing a permanent solution. And I know Tiffany Carlson will be at Earth Day. So that's what I have. Are there any questions or comments for me from the commissioners?
Was the SCORE and Bethel Library series, like, was it promoted within our contact list? Was it sent out that way?
I don't know. They have their own marketing. It wasn't, yeah, but it's still going on. Anybody can sign up. It's every Thursday through May 9th. Yeah, but yeah, but that would've been a good idea. But yeah, it's, it's a free service. Actually, all, any of the advice is free. And the mentor, the people that participate on the team, they're all, not everybody is retired. Actually, it's only 50% are retired. Others are still working and volunteering in the organization. So. Anyway, anybody else? Okay, all right. So the next order of business is consideration of approval of the slate of officers. Chairman Catherine Hebert, Vice Chairman Gabriela Hernandez, Secretary Tia Murphy. Are there any nominations from the floor? Okay, hearing none. Do I hear a motion to approve the slate of officers as presented? Do I hear a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Tia and Kelly? Here are your ayes.
Sorry, I was muted.
Sorry, I was muted. Aye.
All right. So the slate of officers as presented passes unanimously. Now we have a slate of officers. Consideration of approval, the March 20th minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve? Second? All in favor, aye?
Sunny and Katie were optioned.
Okay, so. Okay.
I'm sorry, who made the first, the motion and the second?
I did.
That was the second. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the planning committee report. Tia?
We really have no big updates at this time. We had to, we couldn't hold a meeting because we didn't have a quorum. So Gabriela and I met individually since we were at the meeting site and just got some details figured out as to how to fill out some things. But our next meeting is on the 30th, so people from the committee, I hope to see you all there so we can have a quorum and move forward on our work. That's it for me.
Questions?
Yeah. I would like to step down from the planning committee.
Okay. Do we need a vote on that, Mary? We've already stepped down the planning committee?
I don't think, was she appointed?
Oh, I just, I just kind of asked her to be on it.
Yeah, I think you're fine without.
Okay, okay. Thank you. We can note that in the notes.
Walk audit? All right. So the walk audit is we've been flyer-ing and going to the local businesses and informing them of the event. We actually went today and some of the small businesses that we spoke to seemed really interested in potentially participating and volunteering their time because it is a safety concern for the workers and everybody that visits there. And that whole old Stony, what am I talking about? Stony Hill Road and Old Hollyville and all of the sort of adjacent malls. So it's really exciting that it seems like people are interested. There are a bunch of, of those businesses that are going to post the flyers. They're already up. And they're discussing potentially joining on May 18th. We have secured police presence for the event. So Lieutenant Dergan's gonna schedule some officers to be in that intersection for as long as they're not needed anywhere else. And yeah, just to continue reaching out to the community, informing people. Yeah, hopefully get more involvement. I was thinking that maybe we should have the flyer and thing posted onto our Sustainable Commission website if possible, potentially a Facebook event before Saturday. So it's there so people can find it. Doesn't have to be exciting or pretty. And I will send again the flyers and stuff like that. Should we have these available? Oh, sorry. I actually also ordered a poster of the flyers that people can scan and volunteer the form. I'll make some QR codes so that they can also just have the PDF info. Yeah, anything else, Kelly?
No, just when we, you know, it's going to be the, the, the information that we've been handing out that'll go out on the Facebook page, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And how do we get it shared? Can it be sent to Janice? So she can post it to the three other Bethel pages, the Bethel Advocate, there are two others.
So I already made a list of the different, I actually just copied the Earth Day list.
Perfect.
So that when I touch base with Katie and Catherine, they'll know who to send it to and hopefully it'll get reposted to all unnecessary.
Other pages. Okay, great. And then just as an update, we're going to be sending out, right Gabriela, a follow-up email. As we've been going to the businesses, we've been updating the business list with emails and all of that that we can give back to the town of Bethel because they did not really have any contact information for these Stony Hill businesses. So we're going to do a follow-up email to invite them, let them know what's happening, post the flyer, invite their staff. And, oh, we realized today that a lot of these businesses, I think that they'd like to, they have a lot of information. We received more today, like, oh, we'd like for you to know, blah, blah, blah. So even if they don't make it, we're going to send them the map and encourage them to submit their information as they know this area very well. They obviously walk it and use it and park it. So we talked today about encouraging them to fill out information, even if they don't show up to, to volunteer because a lot of them are working that day. They have their businesses open. So that was kind of another way that we can get their, to get their input without necessarily asking for their time. So I was happy. I'm happy about that.
Yeah, definitely. We're gonna do that.
So as far as getting the word out, Emma is back in the first selectman's office and she's been very helpful in getting the word out in addition to Katie about Earth Day. So after Earth Day, connect with Emma and, you know, we'll, we'll get that, whatever the flyer is. She's really good about posting it all over social media.
She's like the new.
She was there and then she went off on maternity leave, right? And she's back.
Oh.
So she's an extremely.
She's like the media person?
Or the social media person, right? Communications, right. And she's been extremely helpful. Great, yeah. So when you do that, just copy me. So she's, you know, what I'm saying, because she reached out to me about stuff. So, but you go ahead and send her the flyer and, you know, have that dialogue with her after Saturday since she's all wrapped up on that.
Yep.
Great. Is there anything else about the walk audit that, besides the posting and all the other stuff?
No, the, the major thing is that the police presence is on the books.
Good. I'm glad that worked out.
Yeah, that's pretty much it right now.
Anything else for the walk audit? All right. And just real quick on Sustainable Connecticut, they're having, their spring celebration event is on, I think, I sent it to you a couple of times, is on Tuesday, June 11th from 4:07 at Wickham Park in Manchester. It's also to say goodbye to Lynn Stoddard, who is the executive director retiring. I did sign up to go. Hopefully it works out. If anybody else is interested, you know, can you, like, what day of the week is it? Tuesday. Anyway, so it's a great, they have regishments. It's a great place, a great way to network with other communities. It's a little bit of a hike, but anyway.
When is that, Catherine, that is coming today?
June 11th, 4 to 7.
Oh, June 11th. Gotcha, okay.
Wickham Park in, what's my hour? Maybe hour and five minute. Connecticut's small. All right. Is there anything else on the Sustainable Connecticut certification?
Everything was locked when I uploaded the P O C D. So if it's marked complete, we couldn't edit anymore. So I think it's because they're doing their rounds of reviews.
Oh, or it may be that I marked it complete. So do I have to, you should.
No, no, it is complete and it should be complete because we have completed those sections.
Okay.
We just cannot edit right now.
Until they get back to us.
Yeah, but I guess, I'm surprised.
Let me check that.
Because I didn't think we were going to get reviewed at all after the fact. So I don't know.
But weren't they going to do a review beginning of April? I thought that was kind of up and there was a conversation when they missed.
For the people that are trying to get certified in April. So we were gonna wait until after April.
I'm gonna check that because, I mean, even if I wrote complete, you should be able to get in it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I think it's submitted right now.
Oh, I don't know.
So we'll see if we get any feedback, I guess.
Okay, that's great. All right, Earth Day.
So we have about 20 booths, a lot of kids' games that Gabriela's taking care of. And I got one food truck and one stand that's selling sweets. And then we'll have the popcorn from Parks and Rec. We have a couple of volunteers that are going to help on the day. There are two high school students as, at this moment, I've asked for four, but for now we have two. And some are going to help with games, some might help with giving the raffle tickets and collecting information from people. That was, we discussed getting contact information for, in exchange for a raffle ticket. There are a lot of great donations from local businesses and I have been posting three or four posts a day.
I see that.
I need to get everybody recognition.
That's awesome.
I was able to use some posts from last year, but there were a lot of new people this year that weren't involved last year. So I had to have more written up. Yeah, it's looking, it's good.
Yeah.
And I sent out an email to everybody who's coming with all the information. So yeah, and Saturday weather is looking good.
It is. It's like in the 60s, a little cool, not gonna rain. That's a plus plus. I, it's interesting because I, under the Sustainable Bethel email is my name and my, and I guess my phone number too. So I got a couple of calls and related to the trash at Palooza, one of them had a 1% difficulty figuring it out. And I said, just to show up.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they'll get, and they'll be assigned. And they said, oh, good. So they were so excited.
Actually, in the last week, we had quite a few people sign up for routes. But I mean, people can even go on their own street. They don't have to necessarily come to us and then figure out a route, but.
I printed the maps.
Okay.
For JB. So I'll bring them on Saturday. Do we need like a sign-in form? Remember we had one last year to collect contact information?
From the trash pickup people?
From just Sustainable.
Yes. I think for the raffle ticket stand and even for a Sustainable Bethel stand.
I could edit the one from last year for Sustainable Bethel and print it, bring it. For the raffle, I'm not sure.
It could just be the same. The same, yeah.
That's great. Yeah. So from last year to this year, this more awareness, more organization. More outreach. Sounds that way.
I think I need to start in October next year because November is a little crazy personally for my family.
Well, yeah, it's holidays, holidays hit in November and then that's it. That's fine. That's great.
But definitely the new process of having the Google form was, was very helpful with collecting information from people. And, oh, I got some tents from the schools. I'm able to borrow a couple 10 by 20 tents. So anybody who doesn't have a tent will have one. I've done a map. So if we ever need a map and to scale of the booths, I can do it.
It was so cool.
Yeah, so.
I will be using the table we usually use for Sustainable Bethel Commission things or the kids' painting. So I ordered the, the table, just FYI.
We have tables and then we still have excess tables that the town has that people aren't.
I have eight tablecloths with Sue Bethlon and I have the banner. So I'll bring that. We should bring our chairs if we want to sit. Are you guys coming?
My bike is coming with my daughter and my son at home. I've got to go to Times Square, New York City, Earth Day, car free day, New York City.
Well, thank you for the bike then.
Yeah.
How's he get the EV chargers though, right?
It's just a strange time. Spoke to a bank the other day, said, no matter what you say, don't use the letters EV when you're asking for things because it's become a bad thing. EVs, EV chargers, infrastructure, it's, even the car companies are pulling back a little bit.
Yeah, I saw that. I read, I read all about that.
Yeah, they're focusing on hybrids.
Well.
That's, that's going to be the transition.
It was the transition.
Yeah, but.
15 years ago. It didn't take then. It was treated like electric vehicles. So now it took, okay, you're complaining about that. Here's real electric for them to go back.
Yeah, that's a.
And.
Behavior change.
The problem that I've seen around the world is the mandates are not going well. Cities are having trouble hitting their sustainability goals. Cities are mandating electric taxis. Every driver has to go out and buy one and then they jack the price of charging. It's happening around the world. So payback to the city of London specifically is they drive their hybrids on petrol.
Yeah, and that's what's going to happen now.
Another situation that's happened in Europe is the push for EVs and congestion pricing. Well, they never solve congestion. Now it's just filled with EVs. You still can't cross the street. So it's getting hard. I was at an event with a ton of EV charger people and they're crying because they're all chasing, you know, big cities. And everyone's trying to spend the money before November. So there's, there's going to be a lot of weird and wasteful projects.
Yeah, I agree. I, I think the best for a small community is just to be prepared and have a.
Yeah, I mean.
I think that's really all.
But EV chargers in this town are an economic development boost because no one's going to come here for all the great food if they can't during the two hours they're here plug in somewhere. So it'll drive people here to become more of a destination if they know when they get there, there's a charger or two.
One of the things I experienced on a recent drive to Plattsburgh was the congestion at the chargers. But then also in the state of New York, they have these like EV chargers that are.
Mobile.
Non-denominational, like they're just.
Yeah, universal charger.
Yeah, thank you, universal chargers. But my car, but our adapter didn't work.
Yeah.
So I think that.
That's usually the fault point, an adapter.
Yeah, so whatever you guys are thinking up, propose, I think that's definitely something.
Driving through LA, I said, what's that line? 45 minutes to get to a charger. My buddy says, I got one. So I don't care. But if you had to, everyone was at the mall parking lot. Charging. So I, I think, you know, we're just looking because none of us really know enough. So we've asked the industry, hey, come tell us what you think we need and then we'll take it from there.
Should lead me into. Yes. So we said, like we said, the last time we sent out the RFI, they're due back on Friday. We got a few questions, answered those and well, once we get them, we'll summarize them for every month. And it'll just be information, you know, for the first selectman and the worst selectman to decide, you know, what the next step is. Anything else on the EV charging? That was a perfect segue. Did we, did we, did we talk enough about Earth Day? You're good?
Show up. Listen, I'm sending you to my place.
That's great.
And a dog.
I'll be there at the booth with y'all from 11 to 2.
This is Tia here. I, I have to be at a family funeral on Saturday. It starts at 11 and it's down in Rutherford. So I'm not, I don't think I'm going to be able to make it.
Yeah, we can't clone it yet.
Condolences.
Yeah. Thanks.
Okay, all right, solar. Someone want to talk about solar? Good, great.
So I've been working on it. One, I've come up with a questionnaire for vendors. So the whole agenda would be that we bring in vendors to meet with residents to educate on the benefits of solar, of course, and influence the process and any incentives that might be available right now. So that's sort of the overall agenda and to make it convenient for residents to ask questions and so on. I've also gone ahead and designed a vendor questionnaire that will have generic questions that everyone needs to ask their vendors. So, so even as they contact vendors to participate in this, I'll ask them to fill out that questionnaire and we'll publish that information ahead of time with each, about each vendor. The, so my steps would be to get in touch with vendors first of all. I have contacted a couple of them and I'm going through the previous list when I ran the solio. When I started getting in touch with them. I've also drafted a press release. If you can send it out on your link, Catherine, I can get that out.
To.
To put out a press release that we're looking for vendors.
Why don't you say that to me?
So that's help that I need. And I'll also contact base, these guys, see how they can help the initiative. And then I'll have to secure library space for the actual events.
Yeah.
And also would need Zoom access if we want to conduct webinars in addition to in-person.
Yeah, that's a possibility for sure. I think the library is trying to do hybrid programs from now on.
Yeah. Because it might not be going for all to come in person and so.
But it may be that if one of the vendors, well, like Postage, right? But it may be that if one of the vendors, well, like Postgen, right, are, they're going to be there and they're. There are also, um, a vendor group that the first selectman had sent out to St. Bethel. That would like to provide some educational programming to, um, residents. So, um. And they'll be at Earth Day. Um, so that would be a really good step to. For them to come and do some type of hybrid educational program at the library.
Yeah, because they're going to set up for that.
And then they will be like a bit of a back and forth to then figure out the dates and times of 17 seasons will occur. Um, and then I'll, I'll be marketing to the residents via Facebook and the town email. Uh, when I, once we're closer to that, I'll take your, um, first selectmen's help for that. Um, and then follow up with the events. So once they, uh, add the events, uh, we can help with the signups of. Um, residents who are interested in protocol. And, uh, then you're just follow up with the vendors, um, channel the leads to the vendors. And see how that's, that's going to go on and have a bi-weekly follow up with them and see what else needs to be done. Uh, to facilitate and, uh. You know, provide monthly results. So, so that's kind of how the whole thing sort of. So yeah, the help that I need is with the, A, with the press release. First and foremost, and subsequent Zoom access and stuff like that. We'll get there. And we have the vendors.
I think we want to see what Postgen offers too, because they're going to be here on Earth Day. That'd be a really good start.
This is eleven to two.
That'd be great.
That is it.
All right. Any questions? Okay, good luck for you. Thank you. Sunny, okay, Pollinator Pathway?
So I submitted all the forms to get our town website on the Pollinator Pathway. There was some like picture applications, but I don't think we're quite there yet. We could need like before, after, before. I was wondering if we had like a list of town properties.
No.
Because like, so they suggested you can have like businesses, you can have town properties and you have individual. All like participate in the Pollinator Pathway. They recommended the easiest place to start is with the town. Properties because like, you know, you have access to that. The land trust can work on it. The garden club can work on it, things like that. So I don't know if we have like a list. Of places so we can narrow down like where we want to start.
There's a map in the P O C D that indicates open space. Like residential, like industrial.
The town's got to have a list.
That'd be great. Yeah, I know. Well, I'm, well, but Pollinator Pathways, not just what the garden club. What's in, right? You're specifically where the Pollinator Pathways are on public property. Or anywhere.
Right, like on the school campus.
Yeah, so, so the whole point of Pollinator Pathway is to move toward native plants and flowers. So even places where like the garden club maybe already has, um. You go, you like focusing on bringing that percentage up. So you could have, you could start with nothing and become Pollinator Pathway, or you could maybe already have something established, continue to improve on it. And like, I would just need to know kind of like where the things that already exist are and where are things that we can, you know, work on improving. Are, and so I just kind of want to start getting like a database together of.
Oh.
Where we can.
So what's existing and what's possible?
Right, on, on the municipal level. Because individuals, you know, you can get your house certified as Pollinator Pathway, you can do that too, but. That's.
Then sometimes, so on public property or even, okay, it, would it be like, i- i- B L T? Or the garden club go on, they have an arrangement with a private property?
Sure, that would be excellent information too. I just thought that would be more difficult to get.
Unless the town has it, I mean, for some reason, whatever, whatever you can.
It's in, it's in the P, it's like several maps.
Does it show that?
It doesn't show specifically Pollinator Pathway, but it shows what type of land it is. So it would show if it's like, uh, open space or preserved or the educational part. It shows like what type of land it is and there's several maps like that. Um, I didn't see a compiled list that specifically says this is an existing Pollinator Pathways. But it's a, it's a place to start, so you can.
Start to differentiate.
Okay, so the P O C D is on the top of the website. We're planning and designing. There's actually a, a click for the P O C. The planning, the plan of conservation development. I, I don't remember what chapter it's under, but it, I mean, it's easy to follow. And then whatever you find out.
Just check with the town clerk.
Yeah, yeah, check with the town clerk. Yeah, that'd be great too. And that's awesome.
What, what's the, the? Plan of conservation and development? That's the P O S.
Yeah, that's P O S.
So how does it work for individual residents if you want to participate? What are the benefits? How does it work?
I'm still working on figuring that out, but generally. They have a program that you work through to try and show that you're increasing your native pollinator plants. And they'll give you, like, you can buy like stickers and stuff to give to people who are part of it and. Stakes, you know, things they can display.
Guidelines. Is that what you're saying? That?
The Pollinator Pathway, it doesn't have strict guidelines. It's not like you have to have. X number of native plants or X percentage of native plants on a property. It's not that.
Okay.
It's just a general like move towards.
Okay.
But you, there is like. Carbonate, like, things you could sell and do to identify as Pollinator Pathway.
And do they provide, does the. State like provide seeds or anything to promote native plants?
Um, as of yet, I've not encountered that. But I'm sure that like they have resources of like what plants are native, like. What you plant in shady areas, what you plant sunny areas. They have like a bunch of resources. I haven't found like physical resources yet, but definitely informational resources.
So once identifying what we have, what's been, what's possible, then it would be possible to create some kind of. Map that includes, like at some kind of design and says, okay, and then they would moving towards it, there would be like a network link kind of thing.
Yeah, and like before we really dig into like, let's do this project, I think we should establish like, you know, where are we?
Yep.
So we have an eventual like, this is where we were, this is where we went, like, kind of the baseline idea.
Yeah, yeah.
And right now we're still getting websites set up, so I figure until that's set up. Focus on that first. They are planning on coming to Earth Day. If you want to confirm that they signed up for a booth, they said they did.
Who?
Pollinator Pathway?
Oh, yes, yes, they are.
Okay. Excellent.
That's great. So we can, we have a lot of.
That's going to be like our kickoff.
We have a lot of kickoffs.
It's awesome. I feel like families are going to leave with all sorts of trees and plants and seed balls and.
Yeah.
It's going to be a great spring.
Yeah, absolutely. One of the other things for sure that's going to be there.
Oh, that's great. Anything else on the Pollinator Pathways? Any other questions?
Um, I know that. The Bethel Land Trust has worked on a map of. Open spaces.
Yeah, and their properties and their inventories on the, the Bethel Land Trust properties.
Yeah.
So.
That was in an email, right?
Yeah, and I saved it to the drive. So I will share that folder with you, Dana, so that you can look through to see if any of that information is useful.
They do a lot of work with that too.
I just saved it. It's there. We just have to get through it.
Yeah, I know. Okay, that's great. Did you want to talk about survey?
So, yeah, so like our current.
So let me just say, so Dana and I had a conversation about, if you guys recall, Sunny, Peter. Um, Katie.
Yeah.
When we first got here to, we were first appointed, we had come up with a survey. Remember that? Yes, and, um, we had handed it out at the energy event. And then we had a link that at the time it was Matt Nickerbacher and, um, Dion, who were in the first selectman's office and. Uh, a survey monkey. There was some data that we got, but then it just fizzled. Um, so I had a conversation with Dana because we were, we were talking about different things. I said, you know, if just the timing of this is now. We really need to start collecting data from people in order to go to the next step to see what people, and, and just do it on a regular basis. Earth Day is a really good starting point and then, go ahead. I just wanted to segue into with that, why you're doing it.
So the current survey is more like piece of paper. I was looking to get something more, you know, digital, like pull it up, your phone, just fill it out, call it a day. Um. And kind of evolving the survey to reflect the sustainable C T more is something that Catherine mentioned. So I was working on kind of. Melding that together. Um, you said you had it on Survey Monkey before?
The town had put that on Survey Monkey. I had talked to Dan about it. And to see if we could just have our own survey monkey, just in, in, you know, as, as a way to be able to.
I looked at Survey Monkey and I signed up for like the free account.
Yep.
And you only get twenty-five free responses.
Yeah, that's what the town had.
That was the problem with that.
Okay, so like that's not, I was like, oh.
What was the other one that you had mentioned?
Um. Doodle pole, but that's more like a time based thing, not like a.
How much is the neck? Go ahead, Sunny.
Yeah, I have my own survey tool. I'm developing the software. I, we can use it for.
We can use your survey.
It's called radar.
Okay, yeah, thank you. That would be great. Yeah, that was the issue. We could only get, we only can only get twenty-five responses. And when we have a community and population of over twenty thousand, I mean.
You can do a Google form. As a survey.
Okay, I'll look into that one too.
That's what I'm doing for the, okay, so there's options, the walk audit volunteer form.
That's what I did for the, for the vendor form, for the involvement form.
And that's in a limited number of responses?
You already have a Gmail, so you have the Google Drive, so all that information can be uploaded in the drive that's already set up. So I, I would second that. It's very easy to use Google Forms.
Okay, I think that might be a good way to do it. So at least it's in our, our, within our teams versus your. I mean, thank you, your business, you know?
But no, I mean, it's something you can set up for any, I can give access to the, just like instead of groupie forms and your.
And the Google Drive also has like logos and things like that so that you can populate whatever.
I will.
Who has that access to this drive?
Well, you, I give all of you access to the drive. Yeah, but I can do it again. Um, now for Earth Day, what are you planning? Dana, for Earth Day?
Uh, for the survey. I was just hoping to have a link and I could just, you know, scan something or open a link and fill it out.
You can make a Q R code of the Google form or whatever survey thing you use.
Yeah, I know you said we've had business like gifts and stuff, maybe like one is a raffle for whoever fills out the survey or something. If you want to like prize it, give some prizes out. Encourage some.
Yes, yeah, we definitely want to do that. And then what we'll do after Saturday, we'll try to get all of that on the, the social media. Um, at the Earth Day event, are we going to collect, um, contacts?
Yeah, I, I need to update the sign in sheet. I haven't made it into a Google form or anything like that. Um, I don't think I will be able to between now and then, to be honest. Um, but I'll definitely edit and print some out, just have them. Um, I'll bring the markers and post-its and that stuff that I usually bring for the table. Um. Other than that, the poster for the walk audit flyer. That's pretty much it.
So that's a great idea, the link, the Q R code, if you could do, yeah, the Q R code, is that we can just have people do that.
Yeah, absolutely. Someone somehow encourage people to do it.
Yep.
Okay.
That would be kind of the simplest.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think people will come up to the table and just let them know what's going on and.
Yeah, and we'll just talk to them. We want their input, absolutely.
Whatever that is, you know, whatever you have on the survey, for sure.
Choose like the biggest and best business raffle item for the.
You fill out the survey, we'll give you this. If you don't, you don't, you don't, um, you're not able to enter.
To win.
Um, that's great. Thank you. Um, is there anything else that anybody wants to bring up? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I just wanted to shout out and promote, uh, Bethel Lions Club. They did a wonderful job. Helping organize the sapling pickup with. I forgot what they're called. Um. Weston Arborist, his name is Chris Fisher and, uh, Kristen Patterson from Peterson from Bethel Lions Club were really helpful. So we got over three hundred fifty saplings this morning. Uh, Nico, who is on inland wetlands and, um, does Bethel Land Trust volunteering. He is housing them until Saturday, keeping them safe and moist. Um, and yeah, then they'll have those out. To give away and they're going to put little tags on it because they're trying to revamp and, uh, generate. Engagement for the Bethel Lions Clubs. A lot of their members are a lot older, so they're trying to get new, new members, uh, participating. So they'll be there and they, she took a bunch of pictures and made a post and is. Yeah, we're getting ready for Saturday and it was really great that Bethel Lions Club donated all those trees.
That's awesome. Three hundred fifty. Hell up.
Yeah, and if we have any extra.
Yeah.
Um, we're hoping that the saplings could get planted, uh, at McCower Park or somewhere that they could be planted. Um, and if that doesn't work out, maybe they could be, I'm hoping that they could, if we have any extra, could be donated to the Bethel Land Trust. So that they can plant them i- around their properties, um, if we have any left. Um, but hopefully people are interested in taking saplings home.
All right, well, let's see if we have any leftover. Three hundred fifty's a lot. But yeah, if we can plant them on public property, that'd be great.
Yeah, um, and there's white oak, there's crab apple, red splendor, there's. Other types of trees that now I don't remember, but they're all supposed to be native and non-invasive and.
So are they going to be there? Who's giving them out?
Bethel Lions Club is having a table that is giving them out.
Okay.
They had a whole process about who. How it started, how it was coordinated, and we picked them up at Weston's Arborist here in town. But yeah, they had a whole thing. I'm not too sure. The details, please.
Anybody else on the business questions?
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, the Monarch Waystation or the Monarch Ladies, are they giving out, um, milkweed? Seeds or milkweed samples, do you know?
I don't think that they're giving out weed things. Well. The one, I was able to get one woman from Monarch Watch, um, and I think it will just be her. Talking about monarch butterflies or with information about monarch butterflies. The other two that are in the Newtown area, I didn't get a response. From them, or I gave more information about the event.
Okay, thanks.
I would have loved to connect all three of them because I guess the Monarch Watch woman didn't know the other two, so it would have been great to connect them, but not this year.
Great, well, well, we'll chat with her. We'll have the opportunity on Saturday, so, but thank you for doing that.
Okay, anything else? Next meeting is May fifteenth. Um, and that would, that's going to be an important meeting because it's a few days before the walk audit. And so that'll be a topic of conversation on May fifteenth. Um, okay, do I hear anything else before I? Hey, do I hear motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second. On favor? Feel better, Tia?